Got a couple items. First item is our annual pharmaceutical collection event. I know I had talked last month at our leadership that DEA wasn't going to be holding that, but we found out last week that they are. So, they're going to hold that on September 26th. It's the national day they're going to do that. We spoke with the sheriff's department and they're able to assist us with that. So, we're just asking for permission to use our water resources facility on the 26th between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM to hold the annual collection event.
Okay. So, we will add that to the date, sure, Teresa? Okay.
Thank you. Second item is requesting permission for project at Franklin Hills wastewater treatment plant. We currently feed caustic soda. It's necessary so that we can basically meet our permit at the plant. But, we currently handle that through 55 gallon drums. We go through those quite regularly. So, we'd like to look at putting in a bulk storage tank that only has to be filled periodically. That way, we're not handling the product. But, also with this product, we need to make sure that we have an adequate water supply so that we can clean up any spills that may happen in I-Wash stations in case there is an accidental spill for any of the employees that are working there. So, this project would take care of the two things. It would install bulk storage and it would provide some water to the site so that we can make it a little bit safer condition.
Is that an automatic feed?
It is, yes.
Oh, so that you don't have to handle?
Right, it's automatic feed, but currently the way we have it is in a 55 gallon drum. They want it emptied, they have to switch all the equipment over to another.
Sounds fine to me. Okay, we will add that to the date, sure, Teresa?
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I did have a request for executive session for considering deployment for a public employee.
Oh, that's it?
I do have some pending items, too. I can give you a quick update on that now or we can go into exact.
Oh, yeah, why don't you?
Okay. One of the items I don't have on here is Ridgestown Water Company. They had their meeting last night. They voted to accept the draft agreement that we've presented to them. So, the next steps will be that we'll have to process it here and signatures and then send it over to them for a final vote. They're looking at, they told me this morning, it would be likely September when they have a meeting for their customers to come and decide whether or not they do want to get rid of the water system, so.
Okay. And I would assume you'll be part of that meeting?
I would believe.
You'll be able to answer questions?
I'll absolutely be there.
Have you gotten a lot of inquiry from people in Ridgestown that are current customers?
We've had a couple. So far, it's been favorable, so.
Oh, good. Good, okay, well, then we'll just proceed with that.
Okay. I don't have an update on City Ravenna Water or City Talmadge Water. Lynn would drive, as of today, out of 15 letters that we sent, we've received 13. Three were yes, 10 were no. Of the 10 that were no, some of them said they would be for it, but they don't want to pay for the sewer. So, it's pretty much the same story that we heard at the public meeting.
Right, so 10 said no.
Yes, 10 said no out of the 15.
I had a call from Mr. Keen.
Okay.
And I did get back, I got back to him voicemail, so, and I sent him an email though as a response. I was just kind of going to update what, what letter he outlined.
Okay.
And reiterated that neither the state nor U-DAC Department of Disability had any funds to defray the cost. And I also realized, having driven down that road, there just aren't as many, obviously, households and for them to even pay for a sewer system, just unfortunately. What about, when you say you got the letters back, maybe I've assumed the wrong thing there. Is this on the income survey or is that still going on with?
That's still going on.
Yeah, with RPC.
Right, this was the letter and the interest survey that we sent them, so.
Well, I wonder though if, again, on repairs, maybe that would be going as a follow-up. I know it was a.
Potentially, yeah.
But, with some of their systems that we got, maybe the new safety program will help. Thank you.
Oakwood, I don't have an update on that. We're still attempting to get, I think, one easement. Village of Hiram, I contacted Mayor Bertrand, but I have not heard back from him.
Okay.
Couple other quick items. We did meet with the health department recently. We met with Mary Helen and Amos to talk about potential areas in the county where they're seeing clusters of failing systems. So, we're going to try to set up a meeting about every other month so that we can keep up to date with each other.
Oh, that's a, that's a good idea.
And finally, we met with Parks yesterday. They, they've been leasing our former Brady Lake Water Plant on Ravenna Road for a number of years. We don't really have a need for the facility anymore. The facility was paid for years ago. They're kind of interested in seeing if they could somehow obtain that permanently. So, I just wanted to share that with you at this time. We can look into that a little bit further and see what might be involved with that.
Sure, yeah. Do we have to declare that, though, probably excess, I don't know? Are you'll check with the prosecutor?
Yeah, I'll check with what would be involved, so.
Great, wonderful.
That's all that I have in my executive session.
And so, is there a motion for, is there some move to get the executive session for personnel?
What specifically is considered employment?
Oh, okay, you got it. I'll second that. Roll call, please, Amy.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes. All right, and Jeff left a couple of schismatics. Is that the word?
Yes.
Has changed toward our table of organizations. Okay, next on the agenda is the prosecutor's office.
Is it due resolutions or something?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the Tuesday, July 21st, 2015 bills ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Roll call, please, Amy.
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, July 21st, 2015 general vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Vicki? Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, July 21st, 2015, then announce certification as presented by the county auditor.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, Tuesday, we can accept it, so I say aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the donation of breast milk storage set from baby Katan?
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all in flavor, flavor, oh my God. All in favor, please.
Aye. Motion to accept Hot Dog Day cash donation from Portage County employees to raise money for the Employee Enhancement Committee to the Portage County Job and Family Services.
Hot Dog Day. I'll second that.
When is that Hot Dog Day?
There it is.
Oh, yeah, they had it. And by the way, one more discussion. Mike Smith, I believe, won the hot dog eating competition. Six hot dogs with the bun. And I think we should award him a certificate of.
Okay.
Not a proclamation, just a certificate.
Whatever.
You know, acknowledging his consumption of six hot dogs.
Okay.
All in favor, please indicate. I say aye.
Aye.
Discussion items. Oh, this is the quote from SW to purchase the DVD.
And I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think so, too. So, we'll add this to today's journal?
Yes.
Is Amy here?
You got your printer, Jeff.
Add the printer.
That's how I get my 10,000 steps in, though, is to, you know, print and run up front and say, which printer, where is it?
Okay, printer, next, all right. You know, the OD and R.
This is interesting. The Aurora East project, Senator Eklund did get $300,000. Won 2016 and 2017, fiscal year. I sent it to Todd and he's not sure. He doesn't think there's anything you have to do. There's no resolution to accept the money. The check just comes in. So, I guess the question is, who's the contact?
Well, Senator Eklund, we saw him after the meeting, the Portage County Board meeting, the board meeting last week, and he is going to, his office will be handling the press announcement.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll orchestrate something here where he's going to present it.
Okay. So, who's the check made up to? It's got to be the commissioners, correct?
I believe.
So, I can email the state back, the OD and R, and say the funds will be coming to the commissioners?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You know, if you want to, is it Tammy or Tina in his office, if you want to?
Check with her?
Yeah, to let him know. He's, you know, he's really been very, very supportive of, you know, Portage County and we want to make sure that we keep him.
Acknowledge that, right.
Yeah, acknowledge it and keep him. Like I said, he said he'd like to make arrangements to come in and present it. I suggested, too, that we let the township trustees know.
Okay.
So, that they could be part of that. And we'll set something up. Again, I'm assuming he's going to do a press release and, you know, we can do something and maybe ask the recruiter to cover the awarding of the check.
And I'm not sure if you want to talk with Denise about it. I don't know if you can use the funds. Isn't there still a federal lawsuit in place?
There is.
Can you do anything? I don't know if you want to talk with Denise about that piece of it.
There is, yes, there is a federal lawsuit. I'm sure that we should, yeah, we'll have to talk with her. I think I had sent her an email acknowledging after the first time. Remember when we called his office?
So, you sent her an email then to tell her?
Yeah, not too long after that, just indicating that it looked like the senator's. And at that point, he said he had included it.
But wasn't sure it would pass, yeah.
Right, but, right. So, I mean, we can, yeah, follow up with her. Thanks for mentioning that, you're right.
So, are you going to contact Denise?
She'll be in, she's coming in a minute, so I just had a little note here for her.
Okay.
Day three, I don't know if you want to talk with Denise about that as well? Special meeting with Hiram Township and the residents?
I thought I remembered her advising us not to go because, I mean, if the organization's going to be there from two.
Heckman?
Yeah. Have they responded?
I haven't even contacted them yet until I have a date.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
So, you'll need a resolution to hold a special meeting off-site on that day, so.
Now, if we do that, you're going to have to be there, right?
I'll go. Amy's on vacation.
Okay.
But that's the same day as your.
The Democratic Party. Central committee.
Oh.
Same time?
Clerk, of course, is going to be appointed.
Seven o'clock-ish?
On the 29th?
30th, 30th.
30th, 30th.
Thursday.
30th is a Wednesday.
Thursday.
It's the 29th.
29th.
There was two invites on that level. One was the 29th and one was the 30th.
Okay, so it's Wednesday, the 29th.
Right. It's Thurs, Thursday's the 29th, isn't it?
No, Thursday's the 30th.
Thursday's the 29th.
Yeah, I've got my calendar. Thursday's the 30th.
What 29th is?
Oh, Wednesday.
Oh.
So, it is Wednesday.
I thought that the central committee was on the 29th.
It is on the 29th.
This is just the resolution. It says July 29th. It should say 29th, not the 30th. It's Wednesday, July 29th.
Well, then I was assuming the others on the, well, no, it did say the 29th.
Well, you didn't screw anything up, Amy. You're fine.
No, no, it wasn't you.
No.
No, 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 we.
I don't know how you keep your head on sometimes.
No, well, we had a notice for another meeting outside of the business of the county, so we just need to, we need to.
Well, it's on my schedule, it's the 29th.
Okay.
The other meeting, so.
At 7:00.
At 7:00.
So, it's the exact same time. How long will that take? I mean, could you do it in 8:00? I don't know.
Oh, who knows? That's right. Who knows?
Or a different day?
Yeah, we just.
You want to do it Thursday?
I think a different day would probably work better because I'm brain dead after.
Well, Thursday, the 30th, or we go into the next week, you're gone.
Yeah.
On vacation. And the question is, Denise, did she tell you?
Should we even do it? Maybe we better talk to her.
Okay, that's a Denise question as well.
Perhaps we should.
Yeah, let's talk with Denise.
We have another meeting during this stuff.
Yeah, Monday, the 27th. That's at Bellis Catholic.
Oops. Okay, thank you for all that confusion. Moving right along to information only. All of these are, commits to sell alcohol beverage will expire. Oh, this is, I guess, just the entity that is affected will be notified, right?
Right, it's just a notice. They send this out every year.
We don't do anything with this.
You're just waiting for them to come in, just to let you know it's coming. And what we do, if we get a liquor notice, we send it to the township and say, do you have any objections? We wait for them to say yes or no, and we send it to the board and the board approves the signature.
And the first one was the public defender reimbursement. Actually, it's 48% or maybe less. It's going to be 50%, but then there's some administrative charges. So, it's going to be 48%. I sent that on to Todd.
Right.
I would assume, I don't know what to assume. We should be in good shape. The sub grant allocation for 2016 offices from Jeff Burger? Doesn't really work.
Yeah, that goes faster. Pull that off. Okay, that's right. This one is on the back, like the.
I'm still trying to find Jeff Burger's. Go to location, this is the fiscal year 2016 reclaim Ohio. View services grant.
We sent it to Todd.
Again, I would assume this will be prepared.
We sent it to Todd.
And journal entries are, they are to be reviewed. We'll pass those later. Do you want to look at, please add to the agenda?
And you might want to hold that for a discussion with Denise as well as the General Health Recovery Board.
Yes, yes. Yes, when she comes in.
Yes, because she's got three things that she wants to talk about.
Good, yeah, let's make sure. Is this, are we ready to pass the resolution?
The full copy's in here.
Okay. We're ready now to pass the resolution for developmental disabilities?
I think you're going to talk to Denise.
Yeah, okay.
There's an email there from.
There wasn't. All right, another one from the, so we're going to release that.
300,000 for Aurora East and Hiram Township, right, on the.
All right, we are waiting for Denise.
Oh, yes.
Denise.
Oh.
Do you have those, that reservation that I wrote? It's all there?
They're all there.
Oh, yes, we have a, probably we have an executive session.
Can you give me two more?
No, they're all right there. I'm not going to pass these out here.
Because number six in that calls for a letter, which is there.
Yeah.
I'll come back to Denise. Is this in the executive session?
Well, I don't know. It's what it is and I would think not.
Or could you just maybe mention the position rather than the name or how does that work?
That's the name. It's always been before. And the second page, you can make whatever changes you like. It's just a generic, in accordance with number six.
Well, you know, I was looking at the letter. Maybe we should, of course, when we come out of the executive session, we have to pass the resolution, so. I, do you want to discuss it? I mean, we know what's in it.
I don't think there's any discussion, sir.
All right. Well, then, we can go ahead and, do you want to?
Make the motion?
Do you want to wait for Denise?
Is there a legal thing?
I don't think so. Does Denise need to talk with you about it?
No.
No, it's done.
All right, go ahead.
Motion to approve the separation agreement and release for HR director?
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
Is that okay the way it turns? Any changes that you like, I can make changes.
No, I think the letter is fine.
But Kathleen, has she looked at it?
Probably not, but I think, I think it'll suffice. I don't think we could add anything else.
Is that the original still in there?
Yes, this, right. We just passed a resolution accepting the separation agreement.
Oh, excellent, okay.
And there is a better container here. Paul Vick and I approved it. Kathleen will be back later this morning or this afternoon, but the letter is signed with us.
Okay. And you can just.
Okay.
Get that to Joanne and let her circulate it the usual way.
Okay.
Yeah. You want me to sign that approval form?
Does she?
Do I need to do that? I don't know if I even put a line on there.
I don't think there's a line on the letter.
Okay, and I usually don't, but.
Yeah, no, it's just a.
Okay. I didn't think there was.
Do you want some other?
Do you want something on there?
Oh, yeah, there's one.
Then let me sign that.
Oh, then, I, you know what, I'm. Oh, yeah, there is. I know, I saw that. I didn't have a copy of that here.
We have two or three things that we discussed. Obviously, you go in, and then two or three things that we were going to add to our general pieces of resolutions that we really need your advice before we do that.
Okay.
I'll just turn it over.
I'm multitasking, so.
Okay. Here's the next.
Revolution in the draft letter. There you go. Oh, to. Oh, to Joanne. Yeah, you've got, he's got eight days to revoke it under the Americans' Disabilities Act. So, you've got time to get Joanne to circulate it and with her lists and so forth, and then to the auditor for a certification.
Is that eight days from last Friday?
From when he signed it, correct, correct.
Americans' Disabilities Act?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, no, I take that back. The Age Discrimination Act gives you eight days to revoke, because apparently old people can't make it, they're mine, that's my.
Oh, gee.
I don't know. I shouldn't be flipping like that, but it was just a matter of, yeah. They do have eight days. They have 21 days to consider it.
Understood.
However, if they sign it, they waive the 21 days and then they have eight days to revoke their signature.
I think you should add that to your list.
Oh.
There should be like.
In my book someday, I'll be.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I am here. My sideways list. Tim Piro got you a resolution to place the Developmental Disabilities Continuing Levy. They did, there was a change in that levy. Same millage, instead of five years, it's continuing.
Yes.
Just as, by way of explanation, we had a, leaving our office and the Secretary of State and the Department of Taxation had a debate over whether that constitutes a replacement or renewal. And my opinion, Tim's opinion, it was replacement. You've changed something, right? Like any repl, you change a term of the levy, it's a replacement. However, neither the Secretary of State nor the Department of Taxation takes that position. So, renewal, I mean, we'll pick that battle. I don't recommend you pick that battle only because if you don't put the levy on the ballot, then you, as commissioners, are responsible for the funding of DD. And apparently, obviously, you don't want to take all that responsibility. So, I would recommend that you just place the levy as a renewal on the ballot, although it is continuing and not for the typical, in five years.
I agree with you.
I just think you've changed something. The electorate needs to know that, and they know that when they see replacement or renewal. Those are the things, the buzzwords that voters see that tells them, okay, this is something different than what I had last time. And while their taxes won't be increased because it's the same millage, it will be forever as opposed to five years.
Yeah, it's different, right.
It's different.
So, Denise, the auditor certification is still correct and the original resolution and the board got?
Right, because it's considered, it's a renewal. Although, again, it's continuing and I think the public should know that. That's just my humble opinion.
So, that's in yes.
Yeah, 1/8.
Okay.
So, anyhow, that's the debate. That's why there was some delay in us just getting you that resolution and that recommendation. But, obviously, you need to get that to the Board of Elections on or before August 5th, so.
And we need a resolution to that.
Right, and we gave you that resolution, so.
So, it's the add-on.
Yeah.
So, we can pass this on?
Yeah, right. Pass the resolution at some point and get it to the Board.
Is there a motion then?
Do you want me to make that motion?
Sure.
Okay, move to declare the necessity of and placing on the ballot of the November 3rd, 2015 general election, a renewal levy of 1 and 8 tenths mils for benefit of the Portage County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
I second the motion. Any further discussion? If not, we can, please, let me keep it.
Aye.
We can certainly, you want to do a roll call, please, Amy?
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes. Thank you. There's not. Well, you were on the sideways.
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm just going to kind of do my. The current Leslie lawsuit goes for the cheese issue with the county engineer. There's nothing to report on that case. Freedom Secondary Local Tax Exemption, number three, I don't have anything to report on that. Financial Network of America, Dave Rowe did give you a response. That was my correspondence, number one. I guess there were some pages missing from some of it. I'm sure that through no fault of Dave's is what was ever, whatever was given to her,[1633.82]
Are there employees who want to invest in this?
I don't know. I know last time there were a few.
Yeah, very few.
I assume those few want to stay in the system, the system, whether they want to invoke this particular option.
I think if we did nothing, the one we had would stay, correct?
Correct.
This is a different option.
Yeah, you're right. It's an enhancement or a little, another program this particular financial network is offering. So you're not in no obligation to accept it, Denise.
He advises that we establish either a policy or process to meet the requirement concerning sponsoring, employing, and disclosures to the plan participants. Why would we kick on anyone if they're doing that?
That's what the plan requires. And again, that's one of the reasons why you may or may not want to adopt this particular option.
I'm not inclined to do this. That's just my opinion.
But this in no way alters the fact that we have some employees that are...
Correct.
And they just still choose...
Stay in the option they're in, correct.
This is an additional option that we don't need to have.
Okay, then, is that the consensus?
I think you can just let Deb know to inform them, which is not to accept this one.
All right, well, okay. Go ahead, Denise.
Number five on my sideways list was the sales and use tax. Did you have any further questions on that? I see it's... I know there were some issues about sentencing and issues.
Oh, I had asked you.
You had asked me those, and I have to defer that to Vic, because that has to do with criminal cases and I'm not well versed in it.
In our meeting, I know that it was he that mentioned something. Kathleen had made some comment about, if necessary, then that, whatever it would be, the lockdown treatment center, perhaps then the person would, we'd keep them there for a year. And I know at that point, he said something about, you cannot keep them there.
Again, if your lockdown treatment center were separate from the jail, okay? The most, on a felony five, most, the felony statutes, when you have a felony one, which is the most egregious offense to a felony of five, most of the offenses we're talking about where you would offer somebody treatment is a felony, those are the felony of five levels. As they get more egregious and more serious, you're in, you've had your chances and now you're really going to prison.
So the one is the most egregious and the five is the less...
Yeah, I get confused, that's why I don't do criminal. But you're right, it is, one is the more offense.
Five is the lowest.
Five is the lowest. But a felony, the felony being that you can be sentenced up to a year. That's the most you can be sentenced.
Up to.
Up to a year. So if your lockdown treatment facility is the jail, then you can only stay in the jail for one year. If your lockdown facility, for example, is a separate facility, you can, between the two places, jail and lockdown, treatment, that can only be one year total. So if you were locking someone up, as Judge Dougherty mentioned last week, for thirty, sixty days to get them through that detox period, and then put them into treatment, that thirty, sixty days has already ticked off a month or two of their one year.
So, are you talking, you know, I don't recall what you said, two separate facilities, they would go to jail, first of all, or this lockdown facility at the jail for detox, then they would come out and go to another facility and treatment?
And then they would go to a treatment facility.
And both of those to be paid for by the gummy?
But those would, well, that's what the sales tax could be used for, both the treatment facilities.
Could never pay for both of them.
Okay. Well, that's why you do have the option, that the jail can be the treatment facility. That means there's more programs, more staff for the jail, but it can be the same building, the same...
Could a person then, that's not incarcerated, benefit from that treatment?
No, because now there's...
But there would be other places where they have to go.
Right, there's other places they can go.
You're still going to spend a tremendous amount of money to offer and maintain that facility for other than, in this case, prisoners.
If they're, you know, if for people that are not in prison, they would have to use Medicaid or some other funding.
That's true, because they're not in prison, so Medicaid, unless that change we talked about is happening, their Medicaid, Medicare is available to them.
That's with a halfway house and a three-quarter house, whatever, the sober house, that's when that comes in?
Right, yeah. Sober house was after, well, if the judge is going to say, you must go to sober house, okay, that's going to be part of that one-year sentence.
Oh, if they're ordered to go there.
If they're ordered to go. If they're saying, I'm sentencing you to jail for six months, I'm suspending three months of it if you go to sober house, okay? Or I'm sentencing you to one year, I'm suspending nine months of it if you go to sober house. Going is totally up to you. But if you don't go, you're going to spend another nine months in jail.
I think the point that you're making to us, I think, is that we cannot incarcerate for more than a year period, whether it's inside or out.
Exactly. That's it, that's where that one year, so is that long enough for a treatment program? I guess on the professionals, that's what's debatable, okay? So if I...
Of course, if they are incarcerated for a year in the lockup, that's better than what they're getting now. And then, when they come out, we can't force them, but they can then go to a sober house.
They can.
The sober house, which is to open, is it this week, next week? Ribbon cutting?
Yes, this week.
Is going to fund to the tune of $250,000 over ten years. It was my understanding that judges, the judges were strong proponents in that. And at the time, I thought they indicated, this will help reduce the female population in our jail, because they would be able to come out of there and be placed at the sober house. Now, I don't...
And yes, that is true. It's, I guess I was just speaking to, if we could do something beyond one year.
Right, right.
That is true, because now, again, a judge could say, you are sentenced to one year, I'm suspending nine months of it, you're on probation. As part of your probation, you must go to sober house, okay?
Sure.
I don't know if the sober house treatment program is longer than nine months. That I don't know, I don't know.
I think that is an individual thing.
It's flexible, yeah.
So, I can compel you for that nine months to attend sober house. If the treatment program that has been chosen for you is beyond that nine months, I can't make you finish it. But hopefully, by that time, you're more than willing to finish and you want to finish it, which would reduce the population at the jail. I mean, that's the, that's the House of Jackbelts kind of...
Do you mind, I know I sent you an email and I also sent it to Deb and Neocap, which is, now I understand, kind of a joint, well, it's not a joint venture, is it? But it, of several counties, including Portage, it serves...
That's a program I am not familiar with.
We read space there.
That could be.
What I wondered was, I asked Todd to look into the operating budget of Neocap. I posed that to one of our meetings and I asked Judge Dougherty if she, I think we were in the task force meeting, if she might have any idea what the annual budget for Neocap was, because that seemed to be the reference, the point of reference for treatment.
I know that it is an option, can be used, but I'm not sure of the particulars and the details of that program.
Well, anyway, I was hoping we'd get, have some information. They're operating by this afternoon.
It's in Summit.
It's in Summit. What county, counties, other than Portage and Summit?
Yeah, it's Portage, Summit, Geoga, is it Ashup, New York?
Could be, and that's part I'm not familiar with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And do you know, though, with Neocap, does a judge sentence a person to Neocap?
I don't know. That's the part I don't know.
I know adult probation talks about Neocap all the time at our safety meetings.
I don't think, I think, and this is where Vic has to confirm this, I believe what happens is you're sentenced and you're sent to probation. Probation does an evaluation, analysis, and then probation may say, you're going to Neocap. Whatever your circumstance is, based on our counselors, our evaluations, our psychological evaluations, you're going to Neocap, you're going to sober house, you don't have to go anywhere. You know, that's how they...
Neocap is a treatment center.
It is, it is part of a treatment, yeah. Now, whether it's pre-sentencing, post-sentencing, I'm not sure.
Is that a lockdown facility, Denise?
I'm not sure.
It is, it is.
I'm not sure. And that very much may, I just wasn't asking.
All right, thanks. That, above and beyond...
That clears up the muddy waters first.
Well, no, that's above and beyond, really, that was kind of springing in. There was one other item that we had, and, excuse me, I'm referring to you. We had been asked to have a meeting in Hiron Township between the residents of, I said, Allen Road and with Heckman Water Resources.
That was the operator of, or the user of that?
Right, and I think you were maybe advising us not to...
Well, I was. One of my advices, do not do anything that would appear to be a breach of your room agreement. You don't want to be in that position. However, I understand, I think part of our discussion last week was allowing this company to hear those residents' complaints and just...
I'm concerned that company's not going to be there.
Well, you're not going to be able to force them to be there. All you're going to be able to do is invite them.
They're not going to be there.
Yeah. Well, I think you invite them if they say, you know, please, you know, RSVP.
I have not yet, because I haven't...
You know, I would like to invite Mr. Edgar to come as well, because he's the fellow from ODNR, I mean, Department of Natural Resources that oversees oil and gas. It would be good for him to hear.
Yeah. Yeah, you can invite them if they decline to come. I mean, maybe that's your first step. We're going to have a meeting. If we schedule that meeting convenient to you, would you attend it? And then hear from them if they say, no way, no how, now you know you're not doing anything else. If they say, sure, we'll be glad to come, bless no when.
So we had a little, we were trying to figure out the date, and we have some confusion.
Well, since she's going to have to send out invitations, we're going to have to give them time to get back with us. So I'm thinking...
We can't really pick a date yet, until you hear from them, maybe?
And I'm leaving the 31st of July, so obviously, I don't have to be there, I'm not saying I do.
Oh, yes, you do.
Yeah, you are here by sentence.
Vacation, what's that?
Yeah, yeah. But again, it's going to be a while before you hear back from them. So I think the first is around the corner.
Maybe mid-August.
We'll step back then and get some different dates from Hiron Township, because they have to reach with us.
Exactly, exactly. But you know what, Deb, I think the first thing would be to invite these folks, and if they don't come, then there's no reason for...
Or if they say, no, we won't, you know, I think what you say is, when we schedule this meeting, will you please come?
Right.
We'll, of course, consider your schedules to ensure, to arrange that meeting, something to that effect. Just let, would you give us a call, let us know if you would be willing to attend, once we schedule.
Are you clear on what you're doing, Deb?
Okay.
And then last thing, where was the Aurora East funding?
Oh, yes, no, I was going to bring that up right now.
I know Senator Eklund had some proposals out there, and there was some $300,000.
Well, he does, but we had a notification from...
$150,000, okay.
We had a notification from ODNR about the availability, and while the senator's going to handle all of that, Deb had pointed out, though, would we be in a position with a federal lawsuit? Does that have any impact on the acceptance? So maybe that's just something for you to consider.
I don't think it does. Let me give Jeff K a call, who's our counsel on that. But I don't think it does. I think it's one of those things where if you're responsible, you're mitigating some damages, okay? Instead of $700,000 for the project, you've, now it's only $400,000. So, yeah, I would, you accept it and go from there.
Oh, but accept it, but we really can't operate or spend it or anything for the law.
And then I don't know what time restraints there are, and that sometimes you accept those, that's got to be spent in...
There's not, Deb says.
Oh, okay.
Mickey called them, so there's no restrictions on the funding.
Okay.
Whatever you want with it.
Wow.
As long as it goes to Aurora East.
Right, right.
Well, again, the senator, I mean, he really, that was through his efforts, and when we talked at the Portage Development Board meeting or after that, the quarterly meeting, I think his office is going to coordinate a release and also we wanted to include, ask him to include the trustee associators, though Nancy Meins is very instrumental in contacting them on the show.
Yeah, I did get a lot of emails from her, that's true.
So anyway, that, when we get to the point of accepting it, I suppose...
And I'll check with Jeff, if he thinks there's anything about acceptance. But I don't, we'll do. Want me to send Deb an email, when I get a response?
I would think whatever, yeah, as to how we proceed, then our board can accept that. Okay.
We have six and seven on the list.
Six and seven on the list. Six, I have nothing to report. Number seven, I have given that to Dave. That was your request to join Area 7.
Area 2, the board wants to join Area 2.
Oh, Area 2.
The state's holding it up until they figure out a breakup in Area 7.
Yeah, that sounds like another definitely convoluted...
Evidently.
Mess for very...
They rushed us and said we had to have it done by June 30.
So you're like in the middle of it, so everybody had to hurry up and...
Isn't there, is it Area 17, it's in the desert, Nevada?
Area 51.
Oh, 51.
Area 51. But we have our own Area 51 at the Revena Arsenal, so we don't have to go far. We call it locally, we call it.
Okay.
So, yeah, I saw David will take a look at that, but I...
You can't do anything either.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
I mean, at least we can familiarize ourselves. All righty.
Okay.
Then I was going to stick around, I'll stick around in the back. I know Janet and Susan will come up.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're moving right along here. Kathleen, Jeff was in and he left a packet for you.
Okay, thank you. Did we authorize that meeting?
No, we want to talk about that.
Okay.
Oh, I had mentioned to Vicki after our leadership, I mean, our staff meeting this morning, I saw Mim out in the parking lot this morning, and she is having a committee meeting with her committee that's going to be hosting the August event that she's asked us to participate in. And they are having their first committee meeting this Wednesday night at the Kent Free Library. We are going to be meeting at the Kent Free Library with the PAPL at 7:00. So she wanted to extend an invitation to ask us to stop.
What time is hers?
I believe hers is at 6:00 or 6:30. I'll have to check. I brought her upstairs this morning so I could get Dr. Piro's number, so she could call him about speaking.
I just got an email from Becker on Neocap.
Okay.
Anyway, so I think with the PAPL, we're meeting in the big room, and then her committee has the small room, public meeting room, so that would be very convenient.
Well, you know, if we're meeting with the PAPL at 7:00 and hers is at 6:00, maybe we should stop in her room first and then...
Oh, yeah. You know, if I have the correct time for hers, it's either 6:00 or 6:30.
Can you share that, Denise?
And the email did go to you as well. Neocap is a state-funded, alternative sentencing facility, which is a secure lockdown facility serving five northeast Ohio counties. It's available only upon order of the sentencing judge on felony offenses. The maximum stay at the facility is six months. The facility provides assessment and treatment for drug abuse, mental health, and occupational issues. Because of the great demand and the limited size of the facility, there's often a waiting list for a bed at the facility, and convicted felons are often held in our jail awaiting an opening at the facility. There's been some discussion on expanding and adding on to the facility, but no firm plans to do so. Any funds to do so will come from the state budget.
From the state?
Yes. I referred you to a website for more information, neocap.org.
Denise, do you not know how much we contribute to that, Neocap?
Yeah, either here or the county.
Yeah, right. I had asked him, I sent him the email, asking him the operating budget for Neocap. And then, I'm sure we're paying a proportionate share based on our opticoncy. Well, good morning.
Morning.
How are you this morning?
Good, how are you guys?
Fine. Okay, we will, oh, course session. Is there anything that you have that doesn't require course session?
Is there anything, a concession?
The only thing is the personnel requisition to post that facility keeper, is that person's resigning. So we're going to post that position.
What are the facilities to, Virginia?
Guess it takes care of the cages, of the dog warden, and unfortunately, may euthanize the animals too. But I think it's really care for the animals walking out, cleaning out the cages, don't start maintenance there.
So he's resigning, so we're just replacing him?
Yeah.
And then must resign his first time?
Yeah, she's actually going back to school. I guess she's going to be a veterinarian. She's moving to Tennessee, so...
Would that be his answer?
It is Joy Keaton.
Oh, oh. All right, I'm just curious. Okay, I think we can...
Do a journal entry, yes.
Journal entry, yes, to post that. Is there a motion for executive...
Yes, I moved to have an executive session for personnel matters.
What, just hire, fire, promotion?
New hire and personnel recruitment. Just a new hire, is that it?
Yeah.
And then, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion of that? Call, please, Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes.
We have to ring.
Great, yeah, it's pretty good.
Just a new hire, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion of that? Call please, Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes.
We got my drain.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
The resignation of the facilities keeper at the dog warden's office effective July 25, 2015. We are approving a new hire as a project coordinator for the Portage Columbia program. And we are also, we are going to be posting the facilities keeper at the dog warden's office position. Are the specifics as to who the names are, because I have your Janice and Debbie, I was to update your entries. Are you gonna have the names?
Yeah.
That's it? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have somebody's leadership team that's in connection?
I have two of them. I'm sure you have yours.
I've got one.
Okay.
Do we have anyone coming in for public comment?
I don't know.
No, it's just Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we're just, we can sign stuff and come back at once?
Yeah.
Don't we have public comment every time we meet?
This Thursday.
Why? When did we decide that? Haven't been doing that for a long time?
Yeah, ever since we went to Kansas, we didn't have it.
If you were to ask me, I probably would recall, but...
That's fine.
We usually do come in on Thursday.
That's fine.
Okay, well, I think that's it until we recess, until...
And we have a leadership team that...
I have a question, since you don't have a public comment.
Yes.
You've accepted the resignation or separation of your HR director yet? You haven't taken no action to post that position?
No, not yet.
We're gonna look at the job description first.
Yeah, we just talked about that in the exec session. We're gonna look at the job description and...
Refine it if necessary or...
In particular, reason why Mr. Janus is no longer with the county? Since it does say in your resolution that all the discussion that was in open meeting, I've been here and haven't heard anything prior to this, so...
Do you want us to opinion on that, or Maureen, do you want to speak to that, or what?
No, we accepted his resignation, and are now going to proceed with looking at the job description and trying to, if there's any changes to it, to do that, and then most likely then to post it.
He's been here for a little over a year. I haven't heard any complaints from anybody other than the one about job performance or anything. I was just wondering if there was, what got to this point so quickly?
Well, he's been in that position a year.
Yeah, since April 14.
And it was just our decision jointly.
I thought he resigned. I thought he resigned.
He did resign, yeah. To accept his resignation.
I think this might be yours. I'm not sure I have.
I have one, too.
You have. You know what? I'm gonna start signing things if we...
Do we reset?
Yes.
I think that's it. We can recess until leadership... All right. Is there a motion for journal entries?
Oh, yes, I saw move.
A second, Deb. Any further discussions about all the papers, please, in the paper saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, and we will put a few minutes for... Anyone else?
That was fun. I'm gonna sit an hour and a half. I wanna slice my wrists after I got up.
Oh, yeah, I know. I know. I hear ya.
I think, you know, I refer back when you say arraignments. I think that Judge Ozwick, Judge Paul, saying that there's an increase in the people showing up for arraignments that are visibly high. Is that the word?
Judge Paul asked the one person, if we tested you today, did you test positive? I'm being, well, honest, I guess.
Yeah. Well, Judge Ozwick said she will oftentimes call the probation department, have them come over and test somebody that's when you're arraigned.
Did we hear from any of the judges that they were coming, or...
I don't know.
It's not 3:30 yet.
When do they get off the bench, at 3:00?
No, it has to be later than that, 'cause I didn't leave after 3:00. I don't think it was straight. Oh, wait, maybe it was before 3:00. I was there at 1:15. Todd's not here either.
Nobody accepted their invitation.
I'm sorry, what?
No one accepted? Are you kidding?
Oh, you guys did.
Oh, did we ask for an RSVP?
Well, you send them a thing, they accept.
Yeah, it's electronic, and then she puts a tracking...
So we have no one coming?
No, I don't know if they're not coming. They didn't respond.
We can always depend on the sheriff being here.
I like.
And Paul, I assure you, these gentlemen, I...
How are you?
Good. This is Jim Smith. He came to our task force.
Oh, yeah.
I'm Joyce.
Yes. Well, this is one of those, it says...
There were 65 females in yesterday. Has that number changed?
How many?
65.
I honestly don't know. I didn't get a chance to look at that today, but I heard we were down to maybe 59.
Oh, they let some go.
Down to that, and Dave was sheriff, a result of people being, dare I say, released or arraigned, or, you know, when you have, if it was 65 yesterday and they're down to 59, what happened to the...
Well, arraignments take place.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
People bind out.
Arraignments. And then if there are arrests today, or more arrests than they will, that will get your population back up.
I suspect it might be headed that direction.
Yeah. Todd, you wanna come up? Do you have something, anything for us?
I do not. I have a lot in my head. If you'd like to ask questions, I did not prepare anything right, you know? I wasn't sure...
Well, we call this meeting for the judges, like, Todd.
Yeah, that's true. And I think they are planning to come. We should give them a minute or two.
We can do that.
I had asked Todd and, actually, I sent information out yesterday, to Denise Smith, to Todd, and to Deb, trying to get some more information on Neocap. Neocap.
I did send them an email, and I talked to the gentleman this morning. They need their board to approve the release of any figures, but then they're gonna give us everything that's approved. So that request is out, and it should be coming. He talked to me tomorrow.
Yeah, I wanted to find out the annual budget of Neocap.
That's what we're asking for.
Yeah. And that's funded through the state, and that's not readily available?
State grants right now is what they, their website indicates their funding is, whether that's grants as in allotments through the budget, or whether it's grants through different departments, I don't know. But again, this gentleman, as soon as they approve whatever, we'll have it all that they're going to give.
Judge Paul was on his way. He was right behind me. On the fatality in Streetsburg?
I did.
There wasn't a police officer, was there?
Was it an auto accident?
It was a chase.
Was it? Oh.
Today, Bart?
This afternoon, they're up there now.
The road's closed.
The what?
The road is closed. It was three cars that were involved in a chase or something, and there's a fatality this afternoon.
Yeah.
Not giving anything up, huh?
No.
I'm telling you what's on WKY.
Not yet.
So...
Oh, my.
I don't know about what fact, so...
That's very sad.
Judge, I was trying, I was trying to retrieve some information on... Oh, go ahead. On the annual budget for Neocap, because I know that's been referenced so many times as to the only facility in, that about five counties have people with addiction that are being brought before a judge, the judge can sentence the male...
Three counties. Is it five?
It is five, yeah.
Five, yeah. Jaga, Portage Summit, Ashdabula, is it Lake?
Ashdabula, Jaga Lake, Portage Tumble.
Yeah. And then those counties can, is the word, the judges can remand a person there, or...
But that's only for felonies.
Only for the felonies, no?
That's part of the dilemma that we're facing, because Neocap is now so overwhelmed by people. We, I mean, I can remember years ago, the waiting was, what, maybe two weeks to get into Neocap?
Sometimes it was 72 hours.
Yeah. Now it's like six to eight weeks to get people in, and that's one of the big dilemmas of jail overcrowding. Where do we put these people?
Well, let me ask you, not too long ago, or however long ago it was, the judges came in, and, some of the judges, and asked us to support the funding of the sober house for females in Kent. And this was undertaken by Family and Community Services, and we did commit, we committed, I think, $25,000, is it a year for 10 years? So $250,000. The city of Kent, I think, committed $60,000 or $70,000. That had, so the facility's been purchased. I understand that's going to open this week or... And one of the, one of the things at the time, the judges that came here indicated that when that happened, when it opened, that there would be the high likelihood that some of the female population in the jail at that point would be, I don't know what the word is, but would be...
Released.
Able to be released so that they could go to this sober house. And so the hope here is that that, with the opening of that, that will reduce that female population.
Well, you know, I can't speak for that. I really didn't know much about it till after it was almost done and over with. That is a, what do I wanna say, post-release facility. So people coming out of, this is my understanding, since I can't order people into Neocap, people coming out of Neocap, instead of going right back into the community, could go to this sober living house. Or people who are in some kind of, mostly, I would have to say, inpatient treatment, 'cause you wouldn't be in outpatient treatment and then continued treatment inpatient. So I cannot speak to that, and I know that we just got something from the probation department for muni probation, asking, apparently, muni probation was asked to review whether there was anybody that we had on probation in municipal court probation, or, now, I shouldn't say that, who was in jail as a result of municipal court order. Was there anybody who could be put into this sober living house? And we did get a letter, probation reviewed it, and said they really didn't see anybody from muni court that could be put into the house, because, you know, we're not sending people to inpatient treatment. That's Neocap, which is commonplace, so we're not, I don't have a good answer for that.
The whole purpose of the sober living is that when people have gone to jail, and then they go out and they get treatment, like, get...
Inpatient treatment.
Yeah, Horizon House or Earth House or something. They're not really ready to be on their own. They go back and they start using again.
Right.
End up in jail again. So the idea is to give them a place where they can go, get further counseling and support, help them look for a job or whatever, so that they can stay there for an extended period of time with the hope that if we're successful, then people will no longer be addicted to the point where they have to break into our homes and steal and end up in jail again. So it's just, one of the big complaints about what we're doing now, which is not working, is that it's not long enough. That people go to jail, they commit a crime, put to support their drug, they go to jail, they get out, and they go right back, do the same thing, come right back into jail. And the hope was that if we gave them a longer period of time where they had support and assistance, that some of them, we'd be very lucky if it were half, I think, but some of them might get over the addiction with the support and never go back, so...
But, so no one can answer, really, and I think now, I think back, and I think it was Judge Pittman that came in with Mark Preson at the time.
Right.
And I thought, I thought it was express stat that would help reduce the female population on draft side.
No, you're...
Yeah, I think that...
But I think that almost remains to be seen.
Understood.
We have to see if, if keeping people in a non-lockdown, I mean, I think the thought is they're gonna come from a lockdown treatment facility into a semi-lockdown facility, and so let's say they're in Neocap for four months, then maybe we can give them another three months in this sober living house. I think the idea is down the road, hopefully, that we may get some people who then will, you know, will be in care long enough, will be in treatment long enough. But, I mean, I guess that's kind of up in the air as to how it's gonna work.
So, I mean, but this, this that you are asking is actually to facilitate people that are incarcerated and giving them treatment while they're incarcerated, or they go through what's called detox, and that they would have, I guess, prescribed medical treatment at the point they enter the jail. And so anyone out in the general community that has an addiction problem would not, could not be served by that. This would only be incarcerated individuals, or people at the point where they're, help me out here, they're arrested and then they're taken to jail if they don't, is it post-bond?
They're arrested, they go to jail, and then they are arraigned, and bond can be set.
Oh, at that point. So anyone that has an addiction, as soon as they're arrested, they could start that withdrawal process right then and there.
If they don't bond out.
I mean...
Provided they don't bond out.
Yeah, usually, they bond out and use again. These are the people I see.
Yeah.
So when we do our arraignment, we order a bond, and then 10 days later, we see them at the preliminary here, well, no, we see them in arraignment if it's, if it's possession, drug abuse instrument. So this is, here's an example. Suzie overdoses, you know, they bring her back... Suzie overdoses, you know, they bring her back with Narcan and they charge, the only thing they can charge her with is possession of drug abuse instruments because in most cases that heroin's already in their system, there isn't any remaining. And so Judge Paul and I usually get them about ten days later, wouldn't you say, for arraignment on that possession of drug abuse instruments?
Are they in the jail this time or they're out?
No, they're out because these are, these, I'm giving you an example.
They're out.
These are misdemeanors.
Well, no, I, I wanna hear, I wanna know.
Yeah, almost all of them are out. They usually get PR'd out or whatever. And then I, to, and I think I told you this the last time, every time I get one of those, I read possession of drug abuse instruments, I read the fact pattern, it says, you know, she was found on the floor in Chineagle or whatever, brought back, blah, blah. And I always call the probation department over. We have a whole system now, we, you know, we email them, they send somebody over and they drug test them. I mean, whenever we ask to have somebody drug tested, they come over. And as I told you the last time, two A one, and I've probably done this with twenty people now, two A one, every one of them is dirty again. This stuff only stays in your system for seventy-two hours. So, you know, we have at least a week span between the time that they are arrested, not, most of these are not put in jail. And we have them for arraignment. I don't know what Judge Paul does, but as I said, I test them and they all, they all come back positive again and sometimes then I order a bond. Because sometimes they've been in car accidents while they've been, you know, while they've been under the influence. I mean, it's just, it's like a judgment call at the time, but...
Is there a legal mechanism though to keep them from that charging to that arraignment? Or there's nothing we can do for that period?
For that week?
That ten days that they're out reusing.
Well, then we'd have double...
Okay, I apologize for not being, for being up here a month later. I'm sorry, sign another warrant. So I, and I'm not sure exactly what the question was. There is no formula, there is no set, you know, this is the model for, for our day-to-day hearings. I mean, I had a girl on jail arraignment today, possession of drug abuse instrument, who's in custody. Because she didn't pick, she gets her, the warrant issued for her, she was clean for two years, for a year and a half, and went back and used it in, in, in possession of drug abuse instrument. But they're summoned in, oftentimes they are summoned in, and it, and, and this varies from agent to agent. The, the sheriffs are very good about following the bond schedule. Some of the other departments don't, we have a bond schedule. When you are picked up, they're supposed to look at the bond schedule and say, okay, we will release you and you are to post four hundred fifty dollars and we will release you and then you're summoned in to appear in court. Some of them don't make them post a bond and they're just released and summoned in and then they don't show up and we issue a warrant. There is no set formula or schedule that we can say, this is exactly how it works. Everyone, not, everything's different. Right now, there's sixty-five women out there.
Yes.
Today. Right, same as yesterday and I left...
And it's the same as Friday and Thursday?
Right, and I left four or five of them out yesterday.
So, but by, by having this lockdown treatment facility that you want, how is that going to reduce that population? I mean, it's not, I mean, because everything you just said, the circumstances vary at the time, I guess they...
I think it's gonna, I think it's going to involve, I mean, they're only setting aside a very small number of beds that are gonna be designated for municipal court.
Right.
Right, so we're, you, you're talking to the wrong, to the wrong folks when you want to determine how that's gonna impact the jail. You need to talk to Judge Doherty and Judge Pittman because they're the ones who are gonna have the vast majority of those beds filled.
Well...
They're talking for the sober house.
Yeah.
But that's after the fact, that's, that's doesn't, that's not gonna impact the jail population.
Right, the fact, the matter is...
Well, no, but I'm, I'm trying to correlate, we're asking, you know, the public to support either by, by vote or imposing that approximately, and I don't know, I, I tried to get a figure from, on the cost of Neocap, what it costs of, budget-wise, to support a venture like that. That similar type of facility here and what that's gonna cost and what's going to be the, the benefit of it for the, for, for the public. If you haven't committed a crime, you're not going to go to jail, so you're not going to be in need of the service of whatever is the treatment or, or, or the counseling. So in essence, you're asking the county to fund a Neocap-type facility.
Well, I thought we talked about that down...
Well, well, we have, but I guess we're at the point of whether we impose it or put it on the ballot, but these are just today's calls. Well, put it on the ballot, let me vote for it, let me decide.
I don't have any problem, I don't have any problem. You've got to decide what our priorities are.
Yeah.
You've got to decide how we best approach this problem. There is no panacea, there is no magic wand, there is no, you know, this is all we have to do and that's all we have to do. It is going to be a combination of a number of factors. Education, uh, boots on the ground as far as, as far as, you know, manpower at the sheriff. Building a new facility or, or increasing the facility, especially for women. That jail was built twenty-five or twenty years ago with a life expectancy as any facility and we have, we have reached that life expectancy of the initial building of, of the female population. So we need to address that, one way or the other. We need to address treatment because, you know, we can sit here and say, you know, we need treatment, but, you know, treatment always doesn't always work either. So you need a combination of treatment and the carrot and the stick. I mean, you know, we need to have a facility, and it's not just drugs that are, you know, we have a lot of shoplifting because people don't have money and they're shoplifting. They're not necessarily feeding their, a drug habit, they're shoplifting. And I, you know, Judge Ozik and me, and Judge Van Causse, we all have similar policies that if you're gonna shoplift, you're going to do three days in jail or whatever. And, and so we need, we need to have that facility available. So it's going to be a whole combination of things to try and attack this problem. The drugs are a huge problem, no question. And, you know, when we have six overdoses in one night in Ravenna...
It was eight, oh.
Well, just as the city of Ravenna.
Yeah.
Six in, in one night, now they were all saved with Narcan, thank goodness, but that, those, those stories never hit the paper. People don't have any idea that this stuff is going on on, on, on a daily basis in their neighborhoods.
But that, they weren't all in the criminal justice system, I mean...
No, they're not.
Yeah, all right.
I mean, they're not even charged. Some of these people are not even gonna be charged, I don't know, but I haven't seen them yet. But I don't have any problem with the recommend, or with the suggestions that if it is going to be voted upon or if it is going to be imposed, that it be for a certain period of time. I, I would, I would, my own preference is that it be enacted because I think that it's, it's in such a dire need. And if we don't do something, that we are going to have some federal judge, and we can all debate whether or not it will or will not happen, I think it will, number one. Number two, how it will impact us. The federal Department of Justice lawsuit or consent agreement has been estimated to be costing the city of Cleveland at least five million dollars a year for the next ten years. And that's probably a conservative estimate. So we are going to be told how to do it, when to do it, how big to do it, and we are not gonna have any say-so in how that is accomplished. And I think that, I don't have any, I think it's a good idea to tell the public, we are going to, we are in such an emergency situation that we are going to impose it, but we are only going to impose it for five years. I, I, I think anything less than five years is, is setting ourselves up for failure, but I think, I don't have any problem saying it should be imposed and it should be imposed for five years and let the people see how we are going to attack this problem and they will then be able to tell us whether they think, they think we're doing the right, a right thing or, or not with the funds that are going to be receiving. Five million dollars a year seems like a huge number and it is, but in the big picture, it is not, as you have, have alluded to, Maureen, it's not much money. I mean, you talk ten deputies, you're talking a million dollars when you add up, when you add up, you know, the, the vacation, the, the uniforms, the, you know, the sick time, the, the salaries, the benefits, and when you're, you know, when you're running an operation seven twenty-four, you know, you can't, you know, you're mul, you're doing it in multiples. You're, you're talking about three shifts, three days, you know, that's nine people in just one day if you're talking three deputies or three COs on three shifts a day. And, and it just adds up very, very quickly. So five million dollars a year seems like a huge number, but it's not when you're talking about seven twenty-four operation.
And the cost to the public is really very small because it's one penny for every four dollars they spend. And then a lot of people spend money in Portage County who don't actually live here. But we have a, a critical issue because our jail was built for thirty-four females and we have fairly regularly now sixty-five or more. The people that we incarcerate are those people who are breaking into our homes and stealing and committing crimes, so the judges really don't have much choice but to put them into jail and we don't have places to put them. And so, you know, we, we need to think immediately about expanding the jail in terms of reconfiguring it as was recommended by you as the first step perhaps. And we also need to worry about having road patrol because people are breaking into our homes and although we can't afford very many of them. And then a longer-term solution would be to try to have a facility that would actually do something in the long term. Short term, the only thing we can hope to do is to have more space for them and to have a sober house, which would help a little.
And we do have the sober house, it's opening, as I said, I think this week.
Right.
Yeah, Nick, my opening, my opening.
But then the, the last thing that I want to say is that we also have to think long term because we think, right now, we know what we're doing is not working, that we understand that seventy-five to eighty percent of the people who are incarcerated are somehow connected to drugs or alcohol. And so, and we know there's a high recidivism rate. So what we're doing now is working long term and it keeps accumulating and we have more and more. So if we should, at the same time, in terms of solving our immediate problems with more space, think about what can we do as a community so that we don't have people who are addicted forever, that we can assist them in such a way, even if it means locking them up and keeping them there for a full year and then having other treatment when they come out in hopes that if we can be successful with even half of them to get off drugs, it helps our families. Reduce costs, we have costs for foster care, we have a lot of probation costs, we have additional court costs, we have public defender costs, we have a lot of costs that are involved with this. So in the long run, we, we really have to think in terms of short-term solution and a, and a long-term solution.
George has to leave at four o'clock, so I'd really like him to be able to add to this discussion a little bit.
Sure, of course, of course.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being able to speak to you and I very much appreciate the thoughtfulness that's gone into this decision based on what everybody has said here. I know we live in a time where people don't trust government much, they don't trust how government uses the money. That's probably part of the concern is. I think Sunday's Record Courier editorial laid out how nicely the jail was built twenty years ago. I was involved with it when they had their first prison, which was a death penalty case and some things. And, you know, it, it sort of laid out the idea that we needed the facility. Sam Bell was the federal judge who ordered that and who administered it. And Sam Bell not only was a friend of mine, but he was one of the most decent men I've met in my life. To him, the integrity of the small person in front of him was more important than the rich guy in front of him and the people that he dealt with, he was very careful about. If the federal government, if the federal government gets involved in this and brings an action in federal court, we may end up with a judge that's gonna make Frank Batisti and the Cleveland busing cases look like child's play, okay? We may end up with an alligator we just can't begin to wrestle. No reason I say that, I hope we never get there, but, you know, in Southern County right now, they're just this close to talking to one Judge Adams about how their jails operated and they know they're in trouble. If I may, you know, I've lived in Portage County for almost forty years, I've been in criminal justice system here for thirty-five. And one of the most amazing things about heroin addicts, and maybe this will help, heroin addicts are just like serious drugs. Serious drugs are never more than twelve hours away from the break. Heroin addicts are never more than twelve hours away from a shot. The judges do a nice job of identifying the people. When they get to an arraignment, when they get to their first appearance, whether it was because they were sitting in jail or as normally happens, they're given a piece of paper called a summon, it says, summons, the judges are doing a very nice job of identifying who needs help. The problem is, is if we don't immediately do something, they're gonna have that next shot within twelve hours. Some of them are gonna be dead, some of them are gonna be stealing. The nature of treatment for heroin has been very, very difficult for our entire society. It is much more difficult to deal with and some other things and I've watched tremendous improvements. I happen to know Sheriff Joe, about two years ago, hired one of the finest drug investigators I ever met in my life and I've dealt with the feds, I've dealt with all kinds of people. Larry Humber, who runs his drug task force, as far as I'm concerned, not only is he bright, not only is he tremendously hardworking, but he has an insight into how these people distribute these things, it's amazing. Lately, they're getting it shipped in from Chicago, who knows how it gets to Chicago. And the drug, the heroin salesman who gets a woman in Portage County, they go to Southern County, when it gets a woman in Southern County, they come back to Portage County. There was just a big federal drug case I happen to have a piece of, it was very clear to me, that Portage County had very effectively cooperated with the feds to stop some guys who I happen to know were distributing huge amounts of heroin. So that part is best as our society can take care of it right now, I think we're doing. In terms of having some facility to hold these folks, one, while they detox, and two, there's a lot more credible treatment available, but it takes a while to connect them. The sober house in Kent, when they come out of that treatment, thirty-five years ago, I'm working for Walcrem at the jail of court, Glen Bay is brand new, and they're bullying teenagers in Glen Bay, admitting they're powerless to drugs and alcohol and they agree they'll change their entire social setting when they get out. I had this was ridiculous because these kids are going right back to the same home, the same school, the same street. For adults, as I, I think you pointed out very nicely, you pointed out, these folks need a lot of support to change to a social group that will not support their addiction. That's what treatment's about today is, is helping them understand the addiction and them getting back to a social group. But the start of it is to give the judges a place for them once and, as I say, I very much admire how they identify this. You know, my job is to fight with authority, okay? If I didn't have authority, I'd be a criminal. So it is very incredible coming from me. Now, I very much respect how the judges in Portage County, this is not a matter of personality, this is not a matter of ego, it's not about their self-esteem. What you've heard from these judges and I think common police judges, is the passion they feel for the parents of the kids who die because they go out and shoot up the next day. The passion they feel for the lives that are destroyed and there, these folks' sincere desire to have an opportunity to make a difference. Not to play games the legislature's set up, not to work, you know, I, I know, I think if, if the community understood folks, how very, very careful you are about this, I think they would applaud it. I think the Record Courier has set the stage for the community to understand that this is not just you guys buying a toy to play with, this is a crisis, it's a tremendous crisis in our community. I become passionate because I've had kids, I had a kid a couple of weeks ago, it was the third time he was found, passed out in the bathroom with a needle sticking out of his arm and I finally had enough, the ethics people would complain about this, I grabbed him by the collar, slammed him up against the wall and said, when you're done committing suicide, the victims are gonna be your parents standing here who are never gonna get over the fact that they couldn't save... couldn't save." And that's some of what you're hearing from the judges, these people, it's not about control, it's not about ego, it's about genuinely caring. And I would encourage you to say to the community, "Look, we're strong enough to do better as a group," because I admire, once again, how careful you are, "but we desperately need to do this, and we're going to do it in such a way that you don't feel out of control, much like the jail twenty years ago, that tax is going to end in a clear time." Okay? Unfortunately, I had an earlier appointment, I have to leave, but thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Thank you. You know, just a comment, I was told the other day, why do we have an overcrowded jail? And I thought initially that it was a slam against Dave, they said, "Because of Dave Doken." I'm thinking, "Dave wants an overcrowded jail?" And they said, "No, he's done such a great job of bringing his drugies in." So, that's a compliment to you, Dave.
Well, thank you, it's not me, it's people there.
Well, but you've put the people in place. You've brought them together.
If I may, I think, too, though, when you undertake something like this, and it is the public's funds, those that will be incarcerated or in that process will have that opportunity. But I, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't think about the people, the numbers of people with addiction problems themselves, or even within their families, that still have a void as to how can they be, you know, how can they receive these services and be treated?
Our mental health and our Coleman Centers and Town Hall Two, they don't do that kind of stuff? I mean, I don't know.
Well, they, they do it, but Vicky, you sat in the same meetings I did, and Sue Whitehurst even said, "We don't do a thorough job of explaining, you know, explaining the levels we have and the layers, and what we have available to the public."
Right.
And that's as concerning to me as it is a person that's committed a crime and is arrested and is going to an overcrowded facility. So, I, I think, you know, you, to me, you, you constantly weigh, you have to weigh all that in your decision. You know, Mrs. Esposito, last week, I thought had a, I think you even called it a, I don't know if you call it a compromise.
Oh, when she said the three year, three years.
We, you know, I mean, we do, we have facilities that people can voluntarily enter, but they're not doing it. I mean, Root House, I'll bet you there's a couple, we only have ten beds in Root House. I'm constantly putting a shovel in it, but I'm telling you, they will, anybody who walks up to, knocks on their door, and Town Hall Two refers, and the Sheriff's Department refers, and we, I mean, they're, you know, those are, they're, I think they're few and far between that are, the families want the treatment, the families encourage them to go to Root House.
Yeah, if the family can do it, they do it.
Can I tell you how many people I've sent to Root House? They, they go out to a meeting, they shoot up, or they bring heroin, I'm just saying, there are options available for...
People that aren't incarcerated.
Who really want the treatment. There, it's out there. And, and a lot of families have insurance, I mean, families are doing things on their own to the degree that they can, so there, there are things.
Well, there are a lot of families, though, that can't afford it.
Maureen, I, I would caution you, I, I think three years is not enough. I, I, I don't have any problem with the compromise that Janet suggested, or in the suggestion that, that it not be indefinite. I, I don't have any problem with, with the fact that at some point in time, it, it should be, at the very least, reviewed to determine whether or not it is still, we are, we are being good stewards, or you are being good stewards with, with the sales tax money. I don't have any objection to that at all. That should be a process, that should be, that should be incorporated into the, the, if it is to be mandated. I don't think that we can wait, though, for November, and then, if, if, you know, if it were to, to not pass, you know, to be back in February, or, or, you know, next May, I think it is such a crisis that we need to address it, and we need to, I would ask that you, that you address it and impose it with a sunset provision, I have no objections, you know, I think that's a good idea. The problem with doing it in three years is assuming that, you know, we then get the, the jail facility built, and then all of a sudden, three years, the rug is pulled out from underneath it, and, and, and it can't be, we don't have enough process, we don't have another, we don't have enough, um...
Sustainability, definitely.
Well, and we don't have enough, we don't have enough of a track record to determine whether or not we are being successful in, in funding it, because it's, as I said, there's no one easy fix. We've got, it's got to be a combination of things, jail, treatment, education, and, and hopefully, you know, getting churches involved, getting the, the providers involved, as far as Tunnel Two, Coleman, Family and Community Services, to, to make a concerted effort.
You know, obviously, the hard part here is, the hard question, do you impose, or do you leave it on the ballot and hope that it passes? And again, part of our whole discussion when we first brought this up was, you know, we're very, have, I don't, I don't want to say the glass is half-empty, but, I mean, nobody I've talked to thinks it has a good chance of passing. So, again, we go back to, that's, that's what you're balancing. I think the idea of whether it's three year, if you choose to impose, the idea of whether it's three years or five years is not going to make a whole lot of difference to the public. You're going to upset people by imposing as opposed to giving them the opportunity to vote. But the problem is that the majority of people, because I talk to people every day, and people generally don't realize how bad it is. They all have, they all know somebody who's died, who's overdosed, whatever, I mean, we all know people, every, one of us, from every walk of life. But the general public does not realize the extent of the problem. And we do, we see it, we're telling, you know, we're telling, we're, we're giving you our, our honest opinion, and where do you go? As Judge Pollan said, you know, if you choose to put it on the ballot and it fails, it's not going to get better, it's just going to get worse, I would think.
I think also, if we put it on the ballot and it fails, we're not allowed to put it back on for, I think, a year. So, it's at least, it would be like, I don't, I don't know, but, you know, maybe yes, yes.
You know, nobody wants to pay more taxes. I, I get that. I don't want to pay more taxes. I got three kids, I got, you know, colleges and, and all these expenses that everyone else has, I don't want to pay more taxes. This, though, is not a property tax, so it's being paid by everybody, whether or not it's, you know, somebody working low-level wages, or somebody who's making, you know, you know, big, big money. It's being paid by anybody who's coming into the county, whether it be, you know, at Aurora Farms, or whether it be at Brimfield, or Streetsboro, or, or, you know, whether it's coming into the county, the car dealership, it is being paid by anybody who's been, who's purchasing non-perishable items.
No food.
No cars, no...
No food is included, and no medicine.
The cars aren't going to be included in this, if somebody...
Oh, the cars are.
No, the title, that goes to the county in which it, our, our citizens will pay it, but if someone from Stowe comes, the money will go to Stowe.
Oh, okay, yeah, I get what you're saying.
Just for those cars, but no tax on food and no tax on medicine.
There is no good answer to, to, to the problem. There are varying degrees of bad, so the worst, obviously, being, being told by a federal judge what we're going to do, and what are we going to do, and how we're going to do it, because that is the worst of both worlds. And this at least gives us some control, we have our, we have the, the choices as to how we implement it, we can, we, we come up with a plan of action, being the first, though, being the, the increasing of the capacity of, of the jail. And, because that is the most acute and critical need. And, you know, do we want a treatment? Yes. Treatment is a hell of a lot cheaper than jail, and it's better for the family, better for the individual, better for all of us. But treatment can only be one part of the equation, and...
Jim, did you want to say anything?
Uh, yes. I think, you know, I didn't realize, I spoke to you in the last couple of weeks, and I didn't realize, as a resident of Porridge County, I didn't realize that there was such a problem going on with heroin, and I'm assuming it's still heroin for most of the time.
Pretty much.
Okay. It takes six to eight rehabs for the average heroin addict to get clean, if they ever get clean. I think three commissioners have a duty to impose this tax if the crime problem is this bad. I mean, you guys are elected to make these tough decisions, and I think this is one that you need to make. As far as the three-year levy, or three-year tax, you're never going to get off your feet in three years, what if you're knocked down? Because obviously, it goes to that one after three, right? So, I would think that it would have to go on for at least five, and why not seven? This problem is not going to go away. And with all due respect to the sheriff, you know, instead of doing ten new deputies, why don't you do five? Because right off the bat, you're down to four and a half. So, no. I mean, and I'm not picking on you, but the problem is so bad, obviously, you know, I agree, you might need more patrols, but you need to throw the money at the judges to get these people into rehab. I just don't think, a hundred thousand bucks for peace officers on the road each year, you know, then what? You're, you're resigning, or you're retiring, correct?
We're not sure about that.
Okay. Well, I was under the impression that you've made several statements that you were in your last term. Okay, so the new guy goes in, and let's be honest, every new office holder likes to bring in friends, you know, do different things, so money's going to get shifted around. I think most of this money needs to go to rehab and the judiciary so that they can get it worked out. You know, if you need five guys, fine, five, get five guys, but don't take a million dollars of this money, because, you know, you're not going to have enough money, quite honestly, with five million. And if you take a million out of it...
Actually, what the money's needed right now is for...
Real things.
I agree. And I'm surprised, I'm assuming you're a judge?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm surprised you haven't had a federal consent decree yet.
So, we're...
And, and you're right, once that happens, you know, you're going to be paying through the nose, you're going to have some special master demanding, telling what you guys can do and not do. I mean, if I was involved with ACLU, I'd have been down here all the way. You've got sixty-five women in a ju, in a jail built for, what, thirty, forty?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four? Yeah, I'm surprised you haven't had a head without already.
So much.
And you get a consent decree, it will cost you a hell of a lot more than, you know, legislature could charge you. But, I mean, I think the commissioners have to do something. You guys are elected, you want to be commissioners, you want to be leaders of the community, you've got to make the hard choices.
I think everything you've said is very, I agree, and it's very poignant, but I think also that any federal, and no one wants to see that happen, but probably within the eighty-eight counties in Ohio, they're all facing this. Now, the, the federal government may say, "We don't care, all eighty-eight of you are going to be hauled into federal court." But I think what the Record Courier's editorial missed by a mile was the fact that the state of Ohio, the legislature, has, has taken away from this county one point three billion dollars annually in the local government's funds, all revenue that could help combat this type of problem. And so...
Okay, but with all due respect, ma'am, the governor isn't going to give you that money back.
No, I, we're not going to, I'm, I'm sure we're not going to get it back, but...
You're not, it's gone. It's not coming back.
Well, and that's the state, not the feds.
No, no, I, I said that, the state, no, the state took it.
But I'm saying, the feds aren't going to worry about what the state...
No, no, I, I know that, I know they're not going to worry about it, but we should have, you know, some, some pressure...
Maureen, you said a point, though, I mean, it's...
Yeah, some pressure should be exerted upon...
They continue to pass the burden on to the community.
Without money, without money to support it.
Right. But, that being said, that's not going to change that equation either, as you said. So, we need to, we need to address it. And, and I appreciate the fact that some people are calling, saying, "Hey, let us vote, you know, we don't want you to impose it." You're not going to have a whole lot of people calling and saying, "Hey, go ahead and put that on, Commissioner." You know, so those are the people who, obviously, yeah, they're, they're going to make their point. No, you have, I think, people who are going to appreciate the fact that, that you're making the tough decision, and that you are providing this for a limited period of time.
Sure. Judges, I think they're going to appreciate equally, though, a well-laid-out plan. You can't just ask or dictate that people do this for whatever, five million, for one year, three years, and, and not have a plan of how you're going to spend it. And I think that's, that's inherent upon us to come up with also.
Well, we do have a plan.
We don't have a finalized plan, Captain.
Well, we have three public hearings in which we shared with the public what the plans were, and we could go over those. Now, this is just for the first couple of years of the expenditure. One, we're going to reconfigure the current jail in such a way that we can accommodate another thirty females.
Approximately.
Approximately, and that's going to cost one point six million dollars, which will include, which will include some staff to, to staff that. And then, we thought that we should go ahead and pursue the idea of having an additional road patrol, that's four hundred thousand that we're talking about. And then, we were also, in the first year, we wouldn't get the five million, we'd get three point seven something, I think. And then, we would pursue the idea of configuring a pod, and at that time, the decisions are going to have to be made as to what kind of pod that is, whether it was going to be a female pod, or if it's going to be a pod that has for drug addicts that are going to get some treatment, that would come into the jail and offer some treatment, or whatever. But basically, those are the plans, so the most immediate critical use of the money that we have, because we have people living in neighborhoods where others are breaking into their homes, and...
That's going to require more than one deputy in three, in three shifts.
I didn't say one deputy, I think.
Well, no, that was in, that was in your, the plan that you're explaining, so...
No, it wasn't one deputy, it was...
Yes, it was one deputy, three shifts, that would be three deputies.
Right.
It was only adding one deputy to the road. I, personally, I don't think that's adequate, but that's what I'm talking about in the sense of a, of a well-laid-out plan, once the, the five million is available.
Maureen, I, I would agree that we, that the commissioners and, and the committees that have been meeting, and, and the other stakeholders here need to firm up and, and continue to work on the plan. The plan is not, I, I don't care whether we had a plan that was set in stone today, that plan is not going to, is not going to be stagnant, and not going to be able to just, "Oh, this is our plan," and, you know, it, it, yeah, and it has to continue to, to evolve and continue to be worked on. And I think that we need to, and all of us, I believe, are committed to continuing to work on that. But I don't think that because we don't have it all set in stone today, that we, that we don't move forward on, on the proposal to enact, enact it with, with the understanding that we are going to continue working on that and finalizing it, and working on a comprehensive strategy to attack this problem.
Yeah, and that's what I, I, that was really my point, I think we not just owe, but that we, yeah, we owe the public a well-thought-out...
Absolutely.
This is going to be on for three years or...
Absolutely.
Initially, and, and here's what we're going to do with the money.
Right.
And that has to be with the concurrence of the sheriff in the sense of how many he feels are necessary if he can commit to putting them on the road, because I agree, we know that the crime rate is up, so...
I was gonna say, we certainly have the possibility, perceibility, of a great oversight committee in the group of people that have come to these early morning meetings. I mean, we've got a couple of concerned citizens that are, I mean, they're just chomping at the bit to be part of this, and yes, impassioned people who want to help with this problem. And I think there's a beginning of your oversight committee right there. I mean, I was pretty impressed, you know, going twice and seeing that these people are committed. They're talking the talk and they're walking the walk. So, you know, we don't have to start from square one, we've already got a group of people who will support you, will support this, and will be the oversight committee, so...
Dave, do you have anything to add to this? I mean, I know we've talked several times and we say the same things all the time, do you have anything new to...
I guess if I had to speak to the board, I would tell you that anything I had to say would be overshadowed by the fact that this drug thing is in our face continually at the office. It's, you know, it's twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. It's not going away, it's getting worse by the day. I got a call last week in booking as the task force was out arresting eight or ten people, half of them were females, and the booking room looked like a sardine can. It's getting worse by the day, the deaths are growing by the day. It's a problem, it's a county problem. If it were my decision, I'd put politics in the parking lot, I would put the tax on, take the heat for it.
And what?
That's just my spin on it, but...
I still hear you.
Take the heat for it, you say.
Oh, well, you know, I don't think it, I find it illogical to say it's a political issue if you put an issue before the public one way, or if you impose it. I don't see the politics of that, I don't, I don't think sequentially I see that. But I think from what everyone's described, it's necessary. I would be infinitely more comfortable with three years to start and hopefully be able to show some very measurable results and then leave it up to the succeeding boards to decide.
Well, let's not forget, if the problem's growing exponentially worse and we can't even get, really dig our, you know, hands into this for another six to nine months, I agree with you, sir, we're, you know, we're not gonna have what we need to show to the public.
I think you're setting yourself up for failure.
Yeah, I think you're setting yourself up for...
That's a band-aid.
I just think you're setting yourself up for failure with only a three-year window. That's my opinion, Maureen. I don't think that, but as you said, in the first year, you're not gonna get five million, you'll have three point seven. You're going to have to, to then turn around, and you're gonna need some lead time to, before it hits the ballot, if we were to be placed out of ballot in three years. You would need at least six months, so you're right down to two and a half years. And then you're not gonna get that first five million dollars for the first twelve months. So really, again, I think you're setting yourself up for failure.
I think we're beyond that, obviously, everyone is, you know, imploring us to impose it, we're going to...
But I would ask that you do it for five years.
I would agree.
Because that will give us enough time to strategize, you know, to measure, to be able to, as a measurable, hopefully measurable criteria to go out to see about remitting it and to show people, this is what we've taken in, this is how we've spent it, these are the results that we can establish, and hopefully...
Judge, you know, even in that, though, I, and maybe, maybe this is more attributed to Vic, but it seems like more and more, you know, social problems are before us, and there is a limit as to the availability even of taxes, whether imposed or voted upon. You know, you can't, you can't solve all the social ills of society by imposing or asking that a living be passed with a tax.
Fortunately, this one... Illness, it's an epidemic, and it's...
Well, I know that, but...
I mean, the problem is, we are all being affected. I mean, you know, yesterday I get an email from my homeowners' association that the next street over, the cars were broken into. Where am I going tomorrow? At eleven o'clock, I'm going to the Aurora Police Department to meet with the police chief. Our new police chief is, was head of the Northeast Ohio Drug Task Force. He sees the problem at Aurora Farms, you know, so we're having a meeting because he got a grant. My mother lives next door to Aurora Farms in a senior citizen's residence, and there were women who knocked on an elderly person's door, you know, they have sliding doors on the outside. They ran from Aurora Farms, knocked on the door and said, "This is an emergency, you know, we're in danger," or whatever. And this poor lady...
Lets them in.
Let them in, and they found them wandering. I mean, this is how, not just being a judge, take the judge part away, this is how it affects me on a day-to-day basis. It's, and let me tell you one other thing that I learned that's kind of eye-opening. I don't know whether you know this, but we have this new head of the Secret Service now who lives in my community, and he was telling me that he had, he ran a task force in Mansfield for a year because Mansfield has the fourth-largest theft ring in the country. So all of these low-die Aurora Farms, whatever, all feeds into Mansfield. And basically, he said, people are, you know, turning the goods in and they're getting the drugs. I mean, that's, so it's just so insidious and so...
Well, nothing, I don't think, you know, we can wave a magic wand and that's gonna stop. I understand these are steps to help combat the problem, but...
But there's a new drug that they want to introduce now, they're trying to get FDA approval, prazid, zohydro, which is ten times more powerful than oxycontin. And, you know, we continue to shoot ourselves in the foot. You know, as I said at the one meeting, you know, the United States has less than five percent of the world's population, and we consume over eighty percent of the world's painkillers. It's absurd, so it's, this is not gonna go away. You know, there was at least one fatality, if not a double fatality, the light flight of the driver this afternoon from Aurora Farms, and somebody had stolen, and there was a chase.
There is, now, we have, we were talking about it before you came in here, and I was...
That's what, that's what News Channel Five was reporting.
And who was killed, probably not the people who were stealing things.
No, they were the people that were, they were the people that were...
Would either of you like to speak, you haven't spoken yet, would you like to speak?
My name's Alicia Wilson, fourteen sixty Congress Lake, Brooklyn Southfield. I deliver medication at night to nursing homes from a warehouse pharmacy in another county. And I can tell you that my job has gotten very scary because they look for our red shirts now.
Oh.
They will sit in the woods, in the parks that are near the homes.
Better quit wearing the red shirt.
And we can't, we have to, the pharmacy requires us to wear it. And we're not allowed to carry firearms due to laws and regulations of the pharmacy, and they look for our red shirts. And, I mean, and I carry anything from eighty-one milligram Tylenol to high doses of Fentanyl.
And you should have an ID or something, rather than a red shirt.
And we are pleading with them to let us have any kind of anything, but they look for the specific...
Well, they have a lot of seats, they will...
Because we drive our own vehicles, so it's not like we have a big banner. But they look for a driver with a certain shirt at three AM because we have routes over there at the same time and we can't afford a sheriff riding along or someone to follow us.
I'll have to say when they're sued, though, because somebody gets killed and you can't get an ID and search. I'm still concerned about that.
Right.
Right.
The one, the one thing that we can take some comfort in is the fact that this is a very small amount of money that we're asking for any individuals to pay. It's like one penny on every four dollars, it doesn't include food nor medicine, it doesn't include their car payment or, I mean, their car cost. And it seems to me as it votes as well. But the vehicle tax goes to the county in which it belongs, or the person lives, rather. So when we're asked, when we, if we impose this, if we're doing that, it's a very small amount of money. And I do think that five years would be the minimum that we could do it to demonstrate that we can be successful.
Todd, did you have something you'd like to add to all this?
I just, I just have two general concerns that, and I think the board is aware of them. The first is the timeframe, I understand if there's a need to do that for the political aspects. But again, our issue is not the building of the facilities, our issue is going to be the staffing of them. Everything we're talking about in terms of this treatment and all that type of thing involves personnel. And so we're gonna get, we're gonna get X years out and have five million dollars in payroll, and then what happens? That's a concern for me, but again, if we need to shorten that timeframe, three years does concern me because we're not even gonna have a new pod built in three years. We're gonna be in the middle of construction at that point, and it would be a shame to have a new pod built and not being able to staff it.
Does it, when you start the full in April?
Well, if, it depends when you pass it. If you do this by July twenty-eighth, Denise was telling you, you'll actually start collections October first, which means we'll have our first payment come December. If you pass it after July twenty-eighth but before October twenty-seventh, you'll begin your collections January first. And if you pass it between that October twenty-eighth and January twenty-seventh, you'll begin collection in April. The April is gonna be if it was voted on, because the vote would be in November. The second concern that I have, first was the timeframe. The second one is, we talk a lot with treatment. I'm hearing a lot that, you know, we need to do stuff before, we need to do stuff after, we need to do stuff while they're in arraignment. The Criminal Justice Services limits those funds and keeps them away from those purposes. If we're going to impose, it may make sense to impose it to a general fund with the Oversight Committee put in place to make sure that that extra five million is going to what we said it was. But the general fund will allow you to open it up to the treatment options post and pre, whereas putting it to the Criminal Justice locks it to only those people who've gone through the sentencing process.
I don't know, I just saw the email that we got from Denise, the email she sent us, you may not have seen it, but she indicated that if we do it for the criminal purposes, that it covers all of those things that we're talking about.
Well, that's while, that's within the year that they are under the Criminal Justice...
It's after that.
Umbrella. In other words, the judge can sentence you to like a Neo cap or whatever, rather than the jail. But once you cross that year, what I'm hearing is we still need something, and that's where we wouldn't be able to reach it.
Well, yes, but it's our responsibility is when they're incarcerated, and it can be up to a year, whether it be imposed in a regular jail or wherever, they place them up to a year. After that, it's going to have to be the social service agencies that provide additional services like the Silver House.
But they're also saying you need money, that's, I'm just bringing that up.
But we, I would not be comfortable imposing it in the general fund. I think people want to know that it's going to be used for Criminal Justice.
We can still report on it.
Yeah, as being used, but I'm also...
As what we did with that quarter percent, I'm just bringing that up. Those were my two concerns, is I've listened to all of those. Three years seems very short because we aren't gonna have our construction finished.
Well, we agree that it'll be imposed for five years. Can we have that, that, I guess, issue cleared up by Denise or in a sense of...
Yes, we have the email here, I don't know.
I'd rather, you know, we, you know, I'd like what you've said to be considered by, by legal counsel to make sure that, you know, if we can do it that way and designate them, I'd probably prefer to do it.
See, I'm hearing what Todd's hearing, that we need, we need to care about after that year.
Right, right.
It's not the year, I don't know if you said year or not, but what Denise said, and it should, we should ask Deb to get the email because she made it very clear, all of the things that we're talking about can be included in the Criminal Justice levy or if we impose it in that tax, can be used for that purpose.
And... That's within the twelve months, though, right?
No, it's not twelve months, it's forever, whatever length of time this tax is on, and the people are paying it, it can be used for all of these purposes. She clarified that in an email that we got maybe a week ago or...
Well, that was a week ago, I would be more comfortable if we consider what you're saying.
I don't have that email, yeah, I don't, no.
Let's, have her delve into it more.
Yeah, right.
She could get that done in a couple of days, but I, I think it's probably more comfortable for the three of you not to put it into the general fund, and if what Denise is saying holds true, then I certainly would do it under Criminal Justice.
What we couldn't use that money for is treatment after they leave the incarceration or the lockdown.
But that's his very point, that's his very point.
But I don't think we intended to use the levy money for anything other than when they should be getting treatment during that year.
No, I think we did with the Task Force Committee, I think there was a lot of...
There was an expectation.
Have we determined whether it can be a jail alternative?
Right.
We have a treatment facility that's a jail alternative, I don't know, I'm just saying, that may fit under that.
That's the Neo cap.
If a judge sentences it, this money can reach it.
What?
If a judge sentences it, this money can reach it, whether it be a year or... The key is the, the people who aren't in the criminal system, it can't be used to treat them, let's say. And my understanding from what Vic and Denise were saying was on the felony fives, the maximum that the court can be involved with these people is a year, that may be my misunderstanding, though.
Well, that's sentencing. A felony five is no more than twelve months, that's what they're talking about. Felony five is six months in jail or prison to twelve months in prison. That just means that that, now, you know, there's...
Because they just put them on probation for five years.
Yeah, they put them on probation after the one year.
But didn't you think that Vicki Kathleen with the task force, that there's an expectation, as you say, that we would be able to use some of these funds for support services, counseling, and so let's, let's make sure we have the latitude to do that.
That was my understanding, Maureen, I'm not saying that's...
No matter what, yeah, let's just make, make sure we get that clarified, yeah.
All right, could we then come to consensus that we will impose it for a five-year period contingent upon, and have it for criminal justice purposes contingent upon the information from Denise that can be used for that purpose?
Well, actually, I think it, wasn't it better not go into that Criminal Justice?
I'd like it to go Criminal Justice if we can use it for the purposes that we've discussed during the time that they're incarcerated.
No, I want it to be beyond the time they're incarcerated. I mean, if we have that latitude, that's what I want to find out.
Can we then make a contingent upon that?
Yes.
Okay, so we can agree for a five-year imposition, waiting for Denise's ruling on whether it has to be in the general fund or can be in the Criminal Justice.
Well, again, based on what we were just discussing here, is giving us some latitude, right? That, you know, I'm thinking of the task force and the composition of the task force, and they all have needs and wants in the sense of being able to foster their services and their programs. And if we have that latitude, that would be a good thing, I think.
Is this a resolution you're doing now, is this a resolution you want brought before the twenty-eighth?
We're making the decision now, based on contingency.
Yeah, so then we can do the resolution once we have that cleared up.
Okay, so in my understanding, you're gonna make these funds only for Criminal Justice, is that correct?
That is the question before us, and we're gonna...
We, we want it for treatment, I mean, we want to use it for treatment also, education.
But, you know, when you say general fund, let's be honest, okay?
No, we're not.
Money tends to get shifted around too much when it goes to a general fund. And I'll tell you another thing, you'll get some cover, maybe not much, but you're gonna get some cover if you denote it only to specific Criminal Justice Treatment Fund.
Right.
Okay, so if you're worried about your political career, you're gonna get some coverage.
About what?
Your political careers.
No, I'm not worried about that at all, I'm not worried about that at all, and I, I think that's insulting. What I'm worried about is the hundred and sixty thousand...
Let me ask you this.
No, the hundred and sixty thousand people in this county, and I try to consider all of them at every time, their safety and their welfare.
You've got a whole problem here.
No, I, well, you're distorting it. I'm worried about what, what our budget and finance director just pointed out in the sense of us being able to accommodate that, to make some funds available for some of these other programs, the agencies such as Town Hall Two... programs, the agencies such as Town Hall 2, those that offer services. If that's possible, yes, I'd like to see that happen.
And I think if I could...
But that's why the general public has problems with taxes, because, you know, when taxes are put on, when levies are put on, you know, all these promises are made that the funds are gonna go here, there, and only for this, and, look, I've been in politics and I've been in government for 30-plus years, and it happens. It always happens. So you can be offended as much as you want, ma'am, but you've got a hell of a problem here, like every other county in this state, and even in the country, with heroin. So, you know, do the citizens a favor and at least lock it up so it's gonna be used for the...
That's what we're trying to do.
That's right, and I'd like to...
We have legal counsel to do that.
And I'd like to read from legal counsel, the section that I believe says that if we do it with Criminal and Administrative Justice Services, you remark it for that, it can cover all the things. So it's going to be about a 10-line read, if you don't mind my doing this. As used in this section, Criminal and Administrative Justice Services means the exercise by the county sheriff of all powers and duties vested in that office by law, the exercise of the county prosecutor's office of all powers and duties vested in that office by law, and the exercise of any court in the county of all powers and duties vested in that court, the exercise by the clerk of court of common pleas, any clerk of a municipal court, having jurisdiction throughout the county, or the clerk of any county court, of all powers and duties vested in the clerk by law, except in the case of the clerk of common pleas court, the tithing of motor vehicles or watercraft pursuant to chapters, and it gives the two numbers of the revised code, the exercise by the county coroner of all powers and duties vested in that office by law, making payments to any other public agency or private nonprofit agency, which means we can contract with people to provide treatment, the purposes of which in the county include the diversion, adjudication, detention, or rehab of criminals or juvenile offenders, the operation and maintenance of any detention facility as defined in the revised code, and the construction, acquisition, equipping, or repair of such detention facility, including the payment of any debt charges incurred in the issuance of securities pursuant to Chapter 133 of the revised code for the purpose of constructing, acquiring, equipping, or repairing such a facility. And what we're asking and what's contingent on today's decision is that we want our legal counsel to affirm that this includes those things that we think it includes, such as hiring other people to come in and offer treatment or other services.
But that's not putting it in the general fund?
That would not be putting it in the general fund. That would be putting it in a, and it would be called Criminal and Administrative Justice Services Fund.
And we want to be certain we can offer those other services that we're talking about.
Yes, and that's what we want to clarify, and Maureen feels more comfortable if we ask Denise to make sure that what this says is what we think it says.
And that's acceptable. I'm just saying...
Unless either of the judges are on, so the attorneys want to clarify that. Clarify that.
Can't, I'm not allowed to.
prosecutors, prosecutors.
Yeah, right, right. Agreed. So we will pose that to the legal counsel.
We'll get that clarification.
We'll get the clarification, and then we will proceed. Okay?
All I can tell you is thank you really, I mean, this, what can I say? I mean, it's just really a very emotional thing for me. I don't know about anybody else, but it's just getting harder and harder every day to, you know, get in the car and drive here and do these arraignments and just...
It breaks our heart when we know them one day, eight people overdose. I read in the paper a couple of days ago that one of our employee's daughter was, or sister, rather, was overdosed and died.
And ashamed in high road.
It just breaks your heart because you know that they need help, they want help, I think.
This stuff doesn't care who you are. It has no bounds. I mean, we've had, I've had soccer moms, you know, who dropped their kids off at school, and they're pulled out, leaving the school property with needles in their, in their pocket. You know, I've had professionals, you know, I've had PhD candidates who the police said it looked like he was a bum. He was a PhD candidate at a local university who was so, was so under the, you know, taken under the, taken under the strength or the grip of addiction that they said he looked like he was living in squalor. You know, we've had people who've gotten hurt. You know, this is a typical person who works construction and has injured their back, and they go to the doctor, and the next thing you know, they're on Vicodin and oxy, and all of a sudden, the doctor's saying, well, wait a minute, you know, you've taken too many of these, and all of a sudden, you know, the heroin is now a lot cheaper and more easily, you know, accessible.
So what are we seeing now, though? Wouldn't you agree now we're seeing 18 to 24-year-olds by the drugs?
Yeah.
I mean, that are just thinking this is, why not? That's the scary thing.
Kids that are just out of high school, there, kids that are just graduated from high school, and this is their second or third go-round already.
Well, clearly, it's a crisis.
Yeah, and I wish it was an easy solution, but it's gonna take a lot of hard work, and it takes a lot of hard work on the individual and the family, and, you know, they also have to, you know, play a huge part of this, but I appreciate you.
I have one more thing. What if between now and starting hour soon, so that you could show the general public and the taxpayer what is actually going on, maybe the sheriff could start putting on his website or somewhere else, on the county website. Now, over the weekend, we had this, maybe someone does a survey of all the police departments every Monday and said, okay, we had 12 heroin issues this week, three overdoses, two deaths, and the others were treated and released, or, you know, and maybe start getting some of this information out to the public of what's actually going on, you know, because I bet there are a lot of people that don't have a clue. I mean, you know, we all hear about heroin, but, you know, most people say, well, I don't know anybody involved, what the hell with them, you know, if they're that dumb, but that might even help, and that might even give you more support. I mean, the public, if they know what's going on, they're gonna be more happy of how the money's spent. They're gonna be okay with that, and because, you know, you almost have to show them what is going on. I mean, I don't get any regular Porridge County newspaper. I go online a little bit, and I live down in Deerville on the lake. I don't lock a door, and I question even if I do this.
You know why?
Start locking your doors.
Seriously, Todd.
But, I mean, I've been in Porridge County, I've owned my home 23 years, and I've lived here 14 years full-time. I think it's a great place, but I think if you took some of these steps, the general public's gonna know what's going on, and they may not be upset when you impose a levy or, just for general information, they can see what problem is out there that you're trying to deal with.
Can we get Larry Limburg, maybe, to help us, like, drug task force?
Larry Limburg is buried.
He has no time for that.
Okay, I'm just saying, I think it's a great idea. I think it gets it out in front of the public. I think that, once the public hears about it, I think they're gonna be interested in it. We just need to find a vehicle, like, through your department possibly.
We need to do that. That's really important, whether you call it a daily report or a weekly report. Like, the public doesn't know that in one day, eight people overdose. They don't know that, you know, that these things...
Two deaths last week of people there.
And if we get, I mean, if we could, my department can help out this way. First of all, we can post whatever you need us to post. We just need the data, but we could also do a GIS map. If we had, like, historical data from 2014, we could even, you know, do it in 2015, but to show either arrests, incidents, overdoses, deaths, I mean, when you look at the county, you'd actually see, you could color code, you know, different types of drug-related events.
And where it isn't happening.
Right, and then that helps also in terms of sometimes looking at where you're gonna focus resources.
And we could do break-ins, but not identifying how.
But whatever we need, we can, we can help out from a GIS perspective as well.
I think we should.
No, we can do it.
There's some things you don't wanna...
We can do it for the whole county. We just did a map of all the 911 calls in the past year, and it really shows and communicates a lot more than just even giving numbers, where you can, you know, see a visual depiction. The other comment I wanted to make is, you know, always remember, our sheriff's department serves a area of 500,000 square miles.
500 miles.
Huh?
500.
500, right.
500, yeah, square miles.
And, you know, when the sheriff comes and says, we need more manpower on the road, you know, it's not a deputy per call, because these calls where we are dealing with violence and with drugs require backup. They require multiple deputies there to make sure that the incident is handled effectively and that the lives of our citizens are protected, and these people are brought into custody safely and not injuring the deputies either in the process, and so...
Or the suspects.
Huh?
Or the suspect.
Right, and so, and the hardest part, you know, again, if you live in a municipality, there can be multiple officers there within minutes. And in our situation, covering the 500 square miles in the county, that's a totally different scenario, because, you know, of where incidents happen, where units are when they get the call, and what it takes to get the manpower there. So adding a deputy per shift does make a big difference in those situations and responding to them and keeping everyone safe and effectively handling them.
No, Brian, not only that, and we talked about this before, and actually the sheriff pointed it out, that the county jail is the only jail that receives prisoners. I mean, I don't know, some of the municipalities may have holding cells or something, but, I mean, that's where they're housed once they're arrested.
Right.
So, you know, that compounds the issue. And I couldn't purport to, you know, propose a number here, but I think, you know, when you first talk to a sheriff, one deputy times whatever, three shifts, but I actually thought you probably would need at least four additional per shift, but, I mean, that's your call in the sense of how many you could put on the road.
Couple hundred would be nice.
Yeah, well, no, I realize that, but I think out in the communities, you know, that's what, and some of the calls I got, that's what they focus in on. I want, you know, someone out here protecting me, protecting my family, and, you know, we had said from inception this would be a safety issue. Hopefully, we can sit with you and try to come up with what would be the most immediate effective number.
Are you reviewing the revenue court house?
Both of them.
Would we want to take this to give to Judge Pedro?
Oh, yeah. A proclamation. A proclamation.
She needs it.
And one of you might be taking that back.
I'll tell you what, depending on how this Aurora Farms thing comes out, you may be heroes by tomorrow morning, because I will bet you dollars to donuts that whoever, if these were the people who stole things, that you or I had had them in our courtroom before, that this, they are not first-time offenders, let's hope they're not dismissed for further review out there wandering around, but it is, it's scary to go over there, because you know what, when you kind of know what, you know, what a thief looks like, how is it that I go into Polo four times in two months and...
In where?
The Ralph Lauren outlet over there. Four times in two months, and three out of four times, I, you know, I mean, you see it, you see it, and again, it's in my neighborhood, so it certainly bothers me, but I've been saying to the Aurora Police Department for years, you guys, you gotta do something, because someday, somebody's gonna get hurt here.
I don't go there anymore, Gar.
Well, I...
I have a good game, I guess.
But anyway, I'm just saying, if this may be...
Well, you're right, no one knows no boundaries. Last week, I was in the parking lot of Giant Eagle out here, because I wanted to be very cautious, I was using the phone, so I parked in the parking lot, gas station, and I had a young lady come up, wrap on the window, and told me she had an emergency situation and could I just give her, you know, a few bucks, which I did do, but...
Wow.
No, no, I mean...
You rolled the window down?
Well, no, 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 but, you know, we all know it's everywhere. It's everywhere.
Well, okay. We're here, make us the fall, guys, if you need to. Any phone calls you get, give them my number. Okay, hey, I'm serious. I saw that thing in, that came across the, you know, the website a couple days ago, and you know what? I almost responded, Brian.
Good, I'm sure they'd love to get a call from a judge.
Seriously, give them my name and number. I'd be happy to talk to them. Spend a couple hours a week.
I want to thank the board.
Yeah, should we do a...
This has been a tough issue.
We can ask, we can ask. We know we're going to do this, I'm not gonna, we can't, I mean, we'll just get that cleared.
The clarification is either should we do a general fund or Criminal Justice Services fund, that's the idea. This, by the way, was sent to us.
Which one's that?
Yes, the one, we made out a readily in the card, because it was all from the revised code, CSU on 15, and it was the last June, 12, September 11.
Well, I wonder, okay, I'm still, we're going to pass the new one, but we're not just, actually, we're going to get that certification. I don't know what, so you can do it generally.
And then decide whether it goes on the general fund or Criminal Justice, so I'm not sure. And Todd, don't take that review as part of the file.
Okay.
You really don't have it on your...
If I have it, I have it.
Just look at the date.
I don't know by the...
I don't know what time it is, but I'm sorry.
What day were you base vote?
We're going to do a journal entry today.
We did a journal entry just now, adding it...
And then they'll come through as a reservation. They'll probably be on Tuesday.
Do I vote, is that your program?
Yes.
But there's a consensus, today's... Today's journal entries, the board agreed to impose a one quarter of 1% sales tax for a five-year period. And contingent, and it's contingent upon, not contingent, with clarification from the prosecutor.
Yeah, estimation of what the general fund is doing.
I want it to be full speed, it's $5 million a year. Yes, that would be, we'll generate a proxy by... And, you know, Paul, I think, too, we do want to utilize an oversight committee and help us with the sheriff and with the judges, just to be transparent. How would that work? And you'll be able to start collecting this data? Yeah. I think we can start collecting this data first.
Actually, if it passes before Tuesday, we will start collecting...
Yeah, it would be five months, right?
October 1st.
Yeah.
Well, that's when the public will start paying, and we'll actually get that data signed.
Oh, okay, so start paying, and then...
Because, wait, when you pay, it actually goes to the state, it goes to the person that's backed you.
And you guys will actually come up at some point with, what exactly happened. Well, finally, I said, we have, I think, we have, we have, I just knew.
Remember about three years ago, you were sitting behind the...
We know number one, we have to make some...
It was the Riedt House, it was Jeremy and Valerie Riedt, and I remember they were touring there from Geodesy County.
Some of those female, the maid's, the transition to the sober house, which opens the...
There's a radiation also, so one male, woman's dark portion of the house, and I remember...
There is a female sober house.
Maybe, right, it was kind of like the expansion system. It's there, and we don't, you know, and just look at where it's...
Help right now to lead some, depending upon the judges, the prosecutors.
And the judges, judges can't...
Well, no, any of the judges actually, they need sober house.
Not sober.
Sober house, that is...
I mean, the money that you're collecting...
No, 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 I'm sorry, no, no, we've already committed, we already committed $250,000. That facility is going to open this week, I believe, or next week, so they could start the transition, like, some of the...
But any trees.
Right. And that to be, you know, that, that will be, that will be something to be worth into this, to this, the revenue coming from this imposition of tax, truth will be part of that. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you.
One suggestion I have, because I drive... I said the children's place goes to bands, and it's two bands, and it says to those childrens, you know why I'm doing this? Because I think it makes a lot of...
Are you...
It's all, it's just, it's terrible. I stayed, I stayed at Jim Green, and then they were like, they were like, they were like, five thirty-one, they saw one sale, maybe twenty-five hundred. Let's go by, let's say, we do a sound check on that, maybe. Let's, you know, one day, like, Friday. Oh, yeah, wow.
Are you intending for this to be...
Yeah, you don't inquire until...
The official action?
Well, we had, one of the... We have to, I mean, we have to...
I was just...
No, I'm sure the court... Um, I wish I would have, you know, people, you know, to... And when they got to eight, I don't know if they're helping.
I thought we were gonna do a journal...
The person driving had a needle...
And we've already killed Willie Bass and some...
We've done, we've done...
Came from a journal...
I showed it on the other...
I don't know.
You know, the other political parties, the sellers, the dealers, you know, how you get them off the streets. And I think, you know, I know the sheriff puts a lot of attention to the drug task force, you know, and...
I have to go and try to say they... Can we do a motion quickly and then, can we do a motion and then adjourn quickly? Because I have some...
Sure, do a adjourn.
We got that journal.
We did. I was...
You have to vote on it.
Well, we vote on journaling, right?
Well, we did. We were gonna add it, but you wanted to...
If this is your...
Okay, make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to impose a 4% sales tax for a period of five years.
To be determined as to whether it may...
There's a contingency with the lease.
With a contingency.
How it's been.
Clarification of whether or not it can be in the criminal and justice services to cover what we want to do.
Whatever I had said before.
What? We need to have an email, probably.
Well, we can...
We want to ask for clarification.
Yeah, right. I think, so, second only thing, I, I had given, I had given Paula that, you know, what we just gave.
Do you want a roll call on, if this is the vote, you should press your roll call.
Well, because it's such an important one.
If we're not coming back, are we coming back with a resolution to vote on separate?
Well, yes.
Well, we, we have to get the clarification from Denise, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's just a journal entry authorizing it.
Because the other, the other issue you have...
We can always do a roll call, doesn't matter.
Yeah, the other issue you have is your opposition has X days to file petitions. We need to know what day that start, that count starts, and I, I don't want to confuse it between today and Tuesday.
No, it's today. We're just...
So when?
Well, then that...
That's all, you know.
We need to do a...
Vicki?
Yes, Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?